Bowing us to assemble virtually today. And may all of us have a blessed rest, stay home, a safe period.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the three fundamental states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Come on in. Anyone wish to address the board? None. Consent agenda?
I have a question on 20-043. Did we pull it off or what should we do?
Well, it's a follow-up resolution. We need, we need to pull it off.
I have a question.
Julie?
Say that again, because I couldn't hear you.
I said that I had a question on 20-043. Can we pull it off and put it down?
We've already discussed that. That's why, and it was voted on at last meeting, Ruth.
I just have a simple question. That's all. I'm not, I'm good with it, but I just have a question.
Allow, just for the sake of keeping it moving, I'll allow the question right now.
Okay. All I want to know is, is why there isn't any dollar figure on the resolution? I see everything that we're going to have daily due for us, but there's no dollar figure. There's no amount of money. And there was on the bids, on the quote, when we talked about this the last time, they gave us a bid. And there was a dollar amount on the bid, but now on the resolution, there's not. So.
Because the motion was to allow daily for the H-back. I mean, it was not simple. There was no dollar amount stated.
They did their bid, Ruth, at the price they bid. So prices on the.
Okay.
The minutes reflect that the motion stated to higher daily, the motion did not have the amount in it. And the bid sheet will be.
She voted yes.
She is on file, so they.
I'm good with it. I'm fine. I just don't want a situation where later on, they end up costing us a whole lot more. And then we've got a resolution that doesn't have any figures on it. But that's, I'm fine. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, in reference to what Ruth just said, if I may, they did bid 30,000. So that should be in the, and that should be in the resolution. Not to exceed $30,000. She's right. They could come back and nail us.
Pull it amended. I don't want to do any more motion resolutions. No going.
Okay. We went through this a couple of meetings ago. We, we're going to have to clean, you know, clean up the motion business if we're not going to. You know, if we're not going to do them right, we're just going to have to strictly go to doing resolutions only and make sure that, you know, our homework is done ahead of time so that we don't have to keep redoing stuff.
To Jody, I, I don't think it's her. I think it's probably the situation that we're in with having to do the videos. But I recall that we did when we made that motion. I'm looking at her minutes right now, and I agree with what she's saying. But when we make a motion to accept anything that's for money, we include the amount of money in that motion. We've been doing that right along.
Yeah. These are different times, and I agree, Ruth. That's a distinct possibility.
We could, can we amend 20-043 to just add up to 20?
We'll have to pull it. We'll have to pull it, Ruth, in order to amend it.
Okay. Put it down under Julie.
That's fine. That's what we'll do.
And then I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept the consent agenda, except for not 20-043, but the other two items move to approve.
I support that.
Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda as amended? I guess we need a roll call.
Yeah. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. Consent is listed. Any comments on consents at this time? Hearing none. Regular agenda. Entertaining a motion to approve?
So moved. Julie?
I second that. No move.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? Bear in mind, we moved 43 down under Julie. Hearing none. In favor?
Commissioner Gaines?
Hi.
Yes. Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
All right. Julie Weatherby, I believe you're on?
Good morning.
Good morning, Julie.
It's nice to be here this, it's nice to be here this morning, even though it's under a little bit of different circumstances. Do you prefer that I turn my video on or leave it off? I know sometimes that can interfere with the.
We're okay. We can hear, I think everybody can hear you okay.
Okay, great. And I just want you to know that Nicole Baker, our ASA planner and coordinator is on the, on the meeting as well. And I may call on her during part of, if you have questions that I need assistance with. So anyway, you all report that was sent out. And just remind report dates of service for the report you received are October 1st of 19 through March 31st of 2020. I won't read through all the numbers on the report, but we can always refer back to it if you have questions that you want referred to. I want to, first page covers services that are provided to Hillsdale County and, and through the Hillsdale Senior Services Center, contracted services. So we contract with Hillsdale Senior Center for things like adult daycare, caregiver support, disease prevention, health promotion, meals, of course, that's the big one, transportation, outreach, and then some in-home services, our home care assistants, home delivered meals and respite services. So for 19, which is for comparison purposes, was $375,794. And so for this fiscal year through March of 2020, it was $75,567. On the second page of the report, you'll see funding that we provide that affects all three counties, including, so that's Hillsdale, Jackson, and Lenaway. And so where we contract out for nursing home ombudsman, that residents of nursing homes and long-term care facilities, and then legal assistance of folks with their legal situations. Veteran Care Management, the number of folks we've served in Hillsdale County through March of 2020 for was 102 so far, seven nursing home transitions. And then in our tiered care program, there's just about 38 people that were served through March of 2020. Information and referral calls approximately through March of 2020 were about 840 calls from Hillsdale County residents. And then of those, we referred out at least 77 calls to Hillsdale County agencies. And then our Medicare Medicaid Assistance Program, or we affectionately call MAP, which helps folks make their Medicare decisions, especially during part D season. We've served 133 Hillsdale County residents through March of 2020. And total savings to beneficiaries in Hillsdale County was $30,000. So just some other updates. Advocacy continues to be an important, important part of our work. We work with our association partners and fellow aging providers to advocate on behalf of the needs of older adults and adults with disabilities to our state and federal legislature. We also, of course, this year, as many of you know, we have significant concern regarding the fiscal year 21 state budget, as estimates show an estimated $3.2 billion shortfall to the overall state budget. We don't know how, how those budget shortfalls will affect those we serve yet, but we're keeping our eye on that and continue to talk about the importance of the work we do to help seniors and adults with disabilities. And then we continue to advocate to our legislature with stories of older adults and adults with disabilities and their caregivers in our service area, because many of them like to hear the stories. And we shared one at our annual meeting last week about a gentleman named Carl who transitioned from a nursing home and how important the service was for him to be in his own apartment now. Our annual implementation plan is going to look a little different this year because of the coronavirus. Aging and Adult Services Agency has extended our plan, our current plan through fiscal year 21. We still have to do a modest update to the plan, which we will forward to, to you all to review. But I just want you to know that they are extending pretty much what we had in the plan because of everything that's happening statewide right now. We're still having a public hearing to gather input from our community on the delivery of our services and programming. And that's going to take place via Zoom, by a Zoom meeting on June 16th at 10:00 a.m. And the invitation has been shared with you all. So I invite you to attend or, or pass it along to some of your constituents if they're interested. The coronavirus has really, you know, been a whirlwind here at Region 2, but our team is strong and we've risen to the challenge. Immediately following the state's, state's declaration of the stay home, stay safe orders, we quickly transitioned to working remotely and, and mobilized our emergency response team to meet with, meet the needs of those we serve in our service area. This group continues, it's an internal group, and we meet at least twice weekly. And so we sort through the changes and the flexibilities that the state and federal and local guidelines that have come out with, and, and look at trends and how they, how these guidelines affect our staff, our providers, and our participants. Communication continues to be a focal point and a top priority for our agency. We have, have had calls and meetings with our providers and community partners, and instead on emergency committees in all three counties, talking about the needs and the, the gaps that we're seeing. In addition, weekly, we are checking in with all of the participants that we serve and have implemented several programs and initiatives to better serve older adults and adults with disabilities during the, this trying time. Friendly Reassurance Program is a program where older adults can receive weekly phone calls to provide companionship and reduce social isolation. The Friendly Reassurance Program was in our area plan, and we had planned to get that going this summer. But with the coronavirus popping up, we, we found that those we serve needed that now. So we've ramped that up, and we have volunteers that are starting soon, and staff are taking care of those calls. We also have worked with our local partners as unmet needs have arise. And things have, we've had calls for needs from the community for prescription pickup, transportation, personal care needs, and grocery shopping. And we've been working with our, our service partners and our communities and, and helping to fill some of those gaps ourselves as well. Caregiver support, we are in the process of rolling out some tutorials to help older adults learn how to use technology to communicate with loved ones and their doctors, and an online training platform for individuals providing care to older adults in their homes. We're finding that our older adults, you know, many times they're feeling socially, socially isolated anyway. And so we're just trying to, to help them learn how to use some of these technical technology platforms so that they can connect with their loved ones and their neighbors and the community. We also have really, we really appreciate our strong partnership with the Hillsdale County Senior Services Center. And we have worked together to help Hillsdale County residents during this crisis. On March 18th, Hillsdale County Senior Services Center suspended in-home services and transportation. But at the same time, thousands of meals and provide information and referral services. We here at Region 2 helped to supplement the in-home services that they weren't able to provide at that time and found alternate providers. But we look forward as Hillsdale County right now, Senior Services Center is in the, in the process right now of bringing back their in-home care under the guidelines of the stay home, stay safe order, using best practices for personal protection equipment and such. Um, that brings me to the next point, you know, personal protection equipment has been a concern. And for all of those agencies we serve, including Hillsdale Senior Services Center and Hillsdale County-based agencies, we continue to seek donations. And when we get that, we get those items that we can share out to the providers and the participants. Aging and Adult Services Agency has had some personal protection equipment that we've been able to get, and we got, have shared with Hillsdale County Senior Services Center, as well as the medical center. We got a few items there. Hillsdale County Senior Services Center is currently delivering over 1,300 meals per week and offering curbside pickup for an average of 32 meals a week. And since the pandemic started, over 81 new home-delivered meal clients have been added to their program. Also, we've been able to offer in, in concert with Hillsdale County residents and the Senior Services Center quarantine boxes, which were a statewide effort, and we were able to get some of those. And we have sent over 200, 100 to Hillsdale County Senior Services Center that have gotten out to, to residents. And more are coming early, early next month. We also were able to get through, through the state, fresh produce boxes, which have a variety of local sourced seasonal fruits and vegetables. And we're getting weekly a number of boxes. And Hillsdale Senior Center will get some of those boxes every week. And they're able to deliver those out in the community. And we're, and this is, this program can potentially be extended through December 31st. The other thing I wanted to mention is our Safe Haven Program, which I've talked to you all about before, where we work with victims of elder abuse in our three counties. And normally, we have a fundraising event in June. This year, our event is going to look a little different. It's going to be by Zoom, and it's on June 17th at 4:00 p.m. And we will make sure that you all get an invitation to that event. And then, and lastly, I just want to point out, our finances are, are looking really good so far this year. We have been able to operate within our budget. And under the direction, our finance department is under the direction of Financial One, which is a company that only works with nonprofit organizations. And they've been able to really help us get our budget and our operations working and well documented. So the, our board is really happy with the reports they're getting monthly. And it really has done a great partnership with Financial One for our, our budget and our operating monthly reports that we, we got. So that's about all I have. I, anybody have any questions?
I have a question, Julie. This is Ruth. Um, how's the advisory council doing? Do you have enough people from Hillsdale County on your advisory council?
Yes, we do. We just, we had one opening that was just approved last month. And we're all filled for Hillsdale County representation. So thank you for asking that.
Do you remember who the people are from Hillsdale that are on it? If you don't, that's okay.
Um.
It's Les Smith, one of them?
Pardon?
Is Les Smith on it?
Yes, yes. Les is on it. The new person is Nene Yvonne. And I, I'm sorry, I can't remember her last name. And then Annette Magda is on. And that's all I can recall right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Julie, this Mark, it looks like some of the areas on your report, you've used a greater percentage, you know, for the first half of the fiscal year than maybe, maybe in the past. Is that true? Or is that?
The report really quick, it does show, it looks like disease prevention and health promotion has been used a little bit higher, but that may be due to an increased allocation this year. So Nicole, do you have a thought on that?
Yes, thank you, Julie. I do. So there is a higher allocation for this year than the previous year. So, meaning that we awarded them more money for the year for that category than we did the previous year. But we're, we're on track after, you know, three quarters, one and two, to beat about 50% of that total allocation.
Okay. That helps explain that. Thanks, Nicole.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions for either Julie or Nicole? Well, thank you for that, Julie and Nicole. And, and we'll look forward to that invitation for that Zoom that you were talking about. And stay safe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. And just reach out if any questions come up in the future. You know, we're all, you know, just trying to follow the orders and kind of responding as they come out. So we're doing our best. But if you have questions, please reach out.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we've got your number.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving right along to committee reports. That brings up.
Mark?
Good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've had a couple of busy, a couple of weeks. And my townships, a couple of them are opening. They are meeting regularly. They're spreading apart and six feet apart, and they're meeting. Pittsburgh Township met, and Wright Township as well met. The only township who met via Zoom was the Wright Township. And Wheatland Township also met, which I attended all of their meetings. They're having regular meetings in person. So they have been busy. I've also been busy with my other committees. The CDE met on May 20th, and we had the meeting via Zoom. And a couple of things that were covered that I'd like to bring light was not too much, but I'd like to bring light on the head start costs. And they talked a little bit about it. And it will be further talked on May 28th at the Community Action Agency as well, that the head start cost of living adjustment and quality improvement funds, that was brought up a little bit. The CAA Head Start Early Start Program will receive 2% to assist in increasing staff salaries and fringe benefits, which will offset higher operating costs. And they talked a little bit about the addition. This grant includes funding that supports activities that will help better incorporate a trauma-informed approach. And that was mentioned, that would support the children and families and staff that's impacted by all these adverse experiences. And this Head Start Program, it will support the teacher level increase and continue with the trauma SMART work and establish mental health supports in Jackson, specifically in Hillsdale as well. And so the total amount of the COLA is what they called was $177,936. Thirty improvements were, the number that they gave was 244,230. And that period would cover July 1st, 2020, to the next year of June 30th, 2021. And this proposal will be brought again on the 28th to further discuss and review by the board. And I will be meeting with them via Zoom on May 28th at 4:00 p.m. We also had the Region 2. Of course, I was very honored to receive an invitation from Greg and Julie. They're doing a tremendous job. They had met with via Zoom again. And I had the privilege to attend that. And the Region 2 area, they celebrated. And they, of course, Julie did a wonderful job, just explaining. The presentation was fabulous. I had a really nice time attending this annual meeting. And it just, it's such a pride that the amount of work that they do in Hillsdale County. So it's commendable. Also, on May 21st, I had the opportunity to be a part of the Michigan Municipal League at 12:00 p.m. I attended a webinar virtually. And a lot of things were talked about, but they also talked about the, the dam that flooded. And they had some of more talks and personnels from the Wayne County. They discussed. To do to protect their citizens and what they're facing at the moment with that. Another thing that was talked about was the rural communities. This was something different. They talked about from the, the flooding that's happened in Midland area. They talked about the rural communities getting federal grants to fight opioid abuse. And I thought that was very important. I thought I'd bring it back to the board and to our citizens who are listening to this via the open forum, that the rural communities now can apply for grants from about $12 million fund to fight opioid abuse under the Rural Communities Opioid Response Plan. It's called the R-CARP. Administration to announce that on May 13th. And what this grant does. I've talked earlier also to Mr. Chairman about it in the past, and to this board as well, that we have this issue of the opioid, and we're fighting it. that we have this issue of the opioid and we're fighting it. And, uh, but then this particular grant that actually captured my attention was that it would support the expansion of prevention, uh, treatment and recovery services for opioid and other substance use disorders. And, uh, uh, there's also some more criteria as they talked about, uh, at this webinar, uh, that again caught my attention. And also I was educated, I'd like to bring back to the board, is the applicant must serve rural communities at the highest risk for substance use disorder. And the rural counties and county-serving rural census tracts within the county are eligible to apply. And, uh, these program applications are actually due by July 13th. And, um, the HRSA is expected to disperse funding by September 1st of this year. And, uh, this grant funding may be also used to support the following activities. They talked about was, um, how the distrib. On, if you remember that, um, our sheriff department, they introduced that. And of course, they, um, also talked a little bit about how they were going to put it into the first aid kit for the, um, local county officials to have it into their kit. So this also addresses substance use disorders in our communities. And one of them was that, uh, which was distribution of the NELOKSON to individuals and organization and provides, uh, community-based training for the same purpose. Uh, then it also talked about a little bit of recruiting and training, uh, providers and support staff and medication-assisted treatment. And, uh, these grant funds cannot be used to pay providers or support staff to deliver the medication. But it, uh, basically it covers the, um, a training, uh, aspect of it. So creating a strategy to reach and engage individuals who are at really high risk of this particular, uh, substance use disorder. And it's called the SUD, Substance Use Disorder. And the opioid use disorders, which is the OUD. And then now this, also this particular grant enables to help, uh, to work critically with the law enforcement, uh, so that they can develop a diversion program. So these were important things that were discussed. And another thing, the last thing that was discussed was the training providers, um, the administration staff, uh, and other relevant stakeholders for, um, optimizing this dispersment, uh, for treatment encounters through proper coding and billing. All of that were talked about. There are more webinars that educate on this matter, but this really is critical for our sheriff department because I know they introduced that, they distributed it. And also, they also had a training program just before we went into this lockdown, um, March 11th onwards. So that was the Michigan Municipal League. I also did have an opportunity to, uh, participate in the Somerset Township Board Meeting. They met regularly, all six feet apart. And, um, they covered a couple of things. Buildings, I don't know if I brought this last, a couple of meetings or few meetings back about, uh, that we had a, um, building plaza that we were fighting as a township to not enable, um, any kind of a marijuana, um, infrastructure there. So we recently heard about that, that plaza would be brought by some other building, uh, still under work. And I'm not at the liberty to discuss who bought that building, but it is not the marijuana, uh, company. So again, bringing in good profitable businesses that also keep our citizens and township safe. So that's the goal. So we're looking forward to getting some local businesses, uh, come in the Somerset Township, which is critical for our economy. And so we're working on that. And I'm very excited as a commissioner to be part of all of this within our township. So that was Somerset Township. So these were a couple of, uh, information, uh, from my townships, from my committees that I attended so far. And like I said, it's been a busy couple of good weeks. With that, I'd like to conclude my report. If there's anything I could.
Any questions for Nemo? Thank you for that report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Brings us up to you, Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go ahead and start with, um, the Resolution 2004-3. And move to amend that to include the bid amount, which was stated on the bid as a fixed fee, not to exceed $30,000.
I support that.
Mark, you're muted.
Okay. What it'll say is it'll stay approved by the Board of Commissioners and such as amended, include not to exceed $30,000. So it will be on there.
Okay, so what Jody was just telling me is it'll be on the, the resolution that you're packing. She'll add it below the signature block, um, as an amendment approved by the Board of Commissioners. So that, it'll appear as far as on the record. So. Okay, is there any discussion?
What's that?
On the amendment. Okay, so first of all, we need to vote on the amendment.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Bruce?
He's muted.
Yep. We're voting on the amendment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carolyn? Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gates?
Yes.
Okay, now the resolution as amended. We will vote on that. So 2043 as amended.
Um, Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiley?
Yes. Okay, we've got that one done. Thank you. Please continue, Julie.
Thank you. Um, Mark and I have been, um, meeting with the department heads, uh, via WebEx, um, on Fridays. And at the last meeting, um, last Friday, we re-discussed, um, which Mark also had under his part of the agenda, but he told me to go ahead with it. We re-discussed, um, I believe it was Appendix C on the questions, um, that would be asked, um, to enter the building. And some new, uh, guidelines on it. And Mark, if you want to go ahead, since you have the printed copy.
Thank you, Julie. I wanted to get this ahead because I know Doug's on. And, uh, I believe he's got another conference later this morning. So before, too late in the morning. I was having some tech problems last night with our computers. Otherwise, I would have sent this out because I couldn't even highlight it. So it's actually Appendix B, uh, Sample Employee Entry Screening Questionnaire. And on the first line of that, there was some discussion that, uh, so that we don't have to keep redoing it. I added, uh, that first line currently reads, "In order to access the workplace, I affirm that I, that in the past 24 hours, I have not experienced." And then there's that list. Well, CDC's list continues to get updated. So in parentheses, I added, "Use current CDC list of symptoms." So that would be something that we talked about and like Julie indicated last Friday. So we would just have to, you know, print off the current list when, when we do reopen and utilize that list as a questionnaire. The other thing that was talked about on Friday, as long as I'm talking about this questionnaire, um, was looking at hiring, um, from one of the companies that do screening or security, either for Jackson or Lenaway. I have reached out to Lenaway, um, that firm. I have not gotten a response yet. Um, so that's something that I'm working on because we will have to hire, you know, two or three people. Um, so it was suggested that we reach out to them and see if we couldn't get these people via that company. So I'll report back to you as soon as I've got something on that. The other part of Appendix B that was talked about quite extensively was the lower portion where it says, "In the past 14 days, you ha," or "have you." Um, and the first one, there was really no discussion on, but it's the part about had close contact, um, with someone with a diagnosis of COVID-19. The second part of that was travel, it currently reads, "Travel internationally or domestically." I'm proposing, and there again, this is just suggestions, but it's a working document. Um, if everyone's okay with this, I can have David send it out later because like I say, I was having trouble. Change that traveled part to read, "Traveled to any destinies," excuse me, "travel to any destinations that are off limits as per CDC guidelines." We wanted to kind of restrict the language on that because just traveling out of, uh, out of the state of Michigan, it doesn't take long for any of us to get across into Ohio or Indiana. So that was, and quite frankly, traveling even internationally. As long as you haven't gone to one of the forbidden travel destinations, it, as long as you pass the screening questionnaire, you should still come back to work. However, we did discuss, um, and so a change I inserted down below, that when it says, "If you answered yes to either of these questions, you are not permitted access to the premise, self-quarantine at home for 14 days." Uh, I added language that anyone in violation of CDC guidelines, as per the travel, will quarantine at their own expense. Did I leave anything out, Julie, that we talked about?
Well, we, we did say, um, if you traveled by mass transit, we had also included that, I thought, in that sentence. Rather than, "Have you traveled here or there necessarily? Have you traveled by mass transit?" And against, um, travel from, have you violated the CDC guidelines travel?
Yeah, I see that in my notes. I must overlook that last night. But, uh, yeah, we've discussed that as well. So I'm that. Where do you think that fits in there?
I just had that sentence replaced instead of saying, "Did you travel domestically or internationally?" It just said, "Did you travel by mass transit? And did you travel to a place not incl," or, I don't know how I said it. Travel to, that's forbidden by the CDC guidelines.
Okay, I'll just add it in here at the end of that sentence. So places that are off limits or are by mass transit. We'll just continue working on this. I guess I'll send this out. We've got extended time now. We just need to have these changes done before we do open up. And as per the governor's most recent Stay Home, Stay Safe Order, we can't really resume operations until after the 12th anyways. So, um, I'm trying to get this. We're going to have another staff meeting on Friday. So I'll try and get this done out to them as well. And if that's something that everybody's agreeable to, well, then, uh, we'll present it, hold on it as an amendment to this plan at the next meeting. Doug, since you're still on, do you have any comments on, uh, this portion?
Uh, no, sir. Those are the things that I had in my notes too. And I'm actually on my Word version right now typing. So I'll send it on to, to you and to, uh, Mr. Holcomb so that you can look it over. And if you want, then you can send it out.
Super, super. Thank you, sir. All right. Julie, was there anything else you wanted to bring up as far as that meeting that we had on Friday?
I don't think so. I think that pretty much covers the main concerns that we had and that we heard from our, uh, department heads and elected officials. So I think, I think that that covered.
I guess the only thing I'll add, since we're on the subject, is that, uh, the, um, courts, of course, have their own set of orders, if you will, from the Supreme Court, um, as far as reopening. And theirs is in phases. But one of the, uh, and we talked about this Friday and Sarah and I have talked about it quite extensively, Judge Loosney, um, they've kind of got three phases. And each phase has to show 14-day intervals of a downward trend. So one of the problems with the courts becoming fully open and fully operational again, um, although they've got, you know, protective measures that are also stated in their reopening, um, is they're looking at a downward trend in numbers. Um, we were flat for a couple of days. And then, uh, yesterday, we were, we were up two cases. But the upward trend has considerably slowed, but we have not seen a downward trend. So, um, that's just something, information, I guess, for everyone. But go ahead with the rest of your report then, Julie.
Okay. EDP met by Zoom and we had a Zoom meeting. And, um, I've sent everybody the, um, report and minutes from the meeting. But, um, one of the main things I wanted to bring up, um, is that Dan English, who works with Michigan Works, um, uh, helping employers with the Work Share Program. And that program allows employers to hire back and pay partial wages while employees can still collect unemployment. So if we have, um, employers in our districts that might need that, uh, to supplement while, because they don't need their people back full-time right away, but they could sure use them part-time, they can work with Dan, uh, through this Work Share Program. It's part of the CARES Act to get some of their people back part-time and not, um, hurt their, uh, you know, hurt them financially, their income. Also, I had a meeting with, um, the City of Jonesville by Zoom and Moscow Township by Zoom. Um, there's a lot going on in both of those places. But the main concern is that, you know, their revenue sharing from the state's going to be way down. And so everybody's working to figure out ways to amend their budgets appropriately so that they'll be able to, uh, complete their obligations to the constituents the rest of the year. Also, the COVID-19 has affected, uh, the parks. At the Parks Meeting on May 20th, um, they reiterated to me that they will have a shortfall of approximately $14,000 in their revenue this year because they've been unable to, um, meet the obligations of running the community center. And they have had to refund those deposits and cancel those events. Um, everything's been canceled through the end of May. And, um, there are some events scheduled toward the end of June and they're kind of waiting on those to see if they're going to be able to, uh, allow those events or not. The Road Commission also met and, um, we talked about, um, some bills that are currently, um, in the House. I think they passed the House and moving to the Senate now that might help us, um, with our local roads. Right now, most of the Road Commission money that comes from the state, it's like in a 75%, 25% split, where most of the money, the 75%, is required to go toward primary roads. And they're looking at, um, bills concerning asset mapping. And as long as your asset mapping is approved, um, by the state, by MDOT, um, you would be able to, uh, spend the money at, more at your discretion. So more money could come to local roads. So that's something for us to keep an eye on. That would be super helpful. Um, other than that, I think that's, uh, wraps up my report unless anyone has any questions.
I have a question, Julie. No, what the status of the parade is going to be.
No, what the status of the parade is going to be?
That parade is probably not happening this year, Ruth. Met with Brett Boyd, who also runs an event that day, and also Chief Heppner from the City Police Department. And we just feel that because we haven't been able to get commitments financially, volunteers, or even people to participate in the parade, and that the risk it might cause having a crowd gathering downtown and at the fairgrounds, that it is not a good idea to proceed with it this year. So we're working on a possible other event, but that's not for public announcement at this time.
Oh, does that? I'm assuming the fireworks also because that would draw a crowd and you're trying not to do things with crowds?
Well, I'm just not able to comment on that at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Julie, I just have a question and a comment, please, if I may. I want to thank you for the fact that you talked about that I, actually, this was something that I saw you earlier to us. I did discuss with one of my townships. And I think it is a smarter way to go for the local townships to deal with their own finances. And again, when it comes down to the MDOT, and I know the revenue, they're very cut down to 50%. And I think the asset mapping would be another good way for them to look at into what they can do. And I think it would give them an opportunity to decide what the priorities would be with all, when they do the asset mapping, correct, Julie?
Well, the Road Commission, so the asset mapping would affect the funds that the Road Commission uses. And it would take away that requirement of the 75-25 split, where 75 has to be spent on primary roads and leave more at their discretion, of course, approved by MDOT, but leave more to the Road Commission's discretion of where to spend the money, which would give them a lot more latitude toward doing local projects.
Right, so that, that was educating. Correct, thank you. 75% that they would usually put it on the primary roads, correct? Is that? Right, right. And the other comment, I want to be able to just say this. When we talked about the CDC guidelines, and I know I have certain all of this, and like I said, in order to open up our economy, I am going to put into the COVID-19 Response Plan, where, of course, I reiterated last time that I wasn't going to be in favor, and I'm still not. But I understand we have to have a plan. But that plan includes also to how safely we can open up the economy rather than putting more restrictions. So the mass transit that you talked about and the questionnaire in regards with the violated CDC guidelines were, during this lockdown, in my understanding, I don't think people have had that mass transit at all other than probably getting out from their home and going to the store or to the doctor's office for a serious problem. So I don't see how this questionnaire would apply as it relates with mass transit or international travel because no flights are going international. And so that would, I think that would be something that we might have to look into as to if you're looking and putting into that. And then, so just in regards to the CDC guidelines, like I said, I have my reservations on this, but just kind of letting you know, there's a whole bunch of time that we're going to spend on putting onto this COVID-19 Response Plan. I would rather see us not putting so much time into that and rather just see how safely we can open up the economy. Because most of my townships, like I, we're meeting and obviously following CDC guidelines. Just a thought, just a thought, really, Julie.
Good point. Just a point of information for you, Nemo. I'm Ruth. And some international flights are flying, truthfully speaking, from Detroit Airport. Delta has opened up a few routes, not a lot. But it is possible that somebody from Michigan could have traveled internationally and be back here because they have been opening up some international, just, just a point of information.
Ruth, and also, you know, talking about traveling international, I'm sure because of a lot of people losing their jobs and local businesses shut, I don't see how people are going to actually afford an international trip for a vacation unless they have gone there for emergency. But that's a good point, Ruth. I appreciate that. And in regards with the parade that you talked about, I know you're not at liberty to comment on it. But just so you know, yesterday I was at the Waldron Cemetery. I was invited there to celebrate the veterans' service there. It was very beautiful. So there were more than 50 people in my anticipation, 50, 50-plus. And we honored our men and women in service. So in regards to the parade, that is not going to happen. I mean, I, I feel that's really sad, and I think I'd like to encourage, you know, our townships to have the parade. Julie, I don't expect you to comment on it, but just making a comment on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Julie? Okay, hearing none. We'll move along to Bruce. You've got a full list there, so you have the floor.
Resolution 200445 to the Honorable Board of Commissioners. We recommend adoption of the following resolution. Where as Act 5, Public Acts of Michigan, 1982, provides that without specific action taken by the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners, the Board shall not levy ad valorem property taxes for operating purposes for the ensuing fiscal year of the county that yield an amount more than the sum of the taxes levied at the base tax rate on additions for the ensuing fiscal year plus an amount equal to the taxes levied for operating purposes for the concluding fiscal year on existing property. And whereas Act 5 provides that the Board of Commissioners may approve a levy of an additional millage within the present legal or authorized millage rate only after providing certain notice to the public and holding a public hearing for the purpose of receiving testimony and discussing the levy of an additional millage rate for the ensuing fiscal year. And whereas the Board of Commissioners, after careful examination of its estimated operating expenses and estimated revenues for the 2020 and 2021 fiscal years, has determined that the best interests of the county may require the levy of the additional rate of .2234 mills to provide sufficient revenue for operating purposes for the ensuing fiscal years. And whereas the maximum millage the Board of Commissioners may levy is 8.0020 mills, now therefore be it resolved that the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners pursuant to said Act 5 proposes a tentative levy not to exceed 8.0020 mills for operating purposes in tax year 2020, revenue for fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021, which includes an additional millage rate of .2234 mills. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Kessel, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Is Ruth's support?
Okay, Nick, go ahead.
Nick's sitting here, so I'll have him get closer to the computer or?
Before he, before he starts.
Say again?
Before he starts, I want the public to understand this 8.0020 mills is all of the millage for the county, for the medical care facility, for the ambulance services, and for the senior centers. The actual millage that goes just to the county for our purposes is a little bit under five mills. So understand, everybody, that this is for all of those services. Go ahead, Nick.
Was there any question? I, I mean, question this one. Pretty much tells it. I think Bruce did a pretty good explanation there that these all, the 8.0020 mills include all. I will point out that the, all of the millages have been rolled back a little bit because the taxable value throughout the county went up by more than the rate of inflation. So we were subject to what's called a heavily rollback. So where last year with the general operating millage, we were like 4.9527. That will be rolled back, no matter what you do here today, to 4.9239 at most. That's the most you as a board can levy for general operating purposes. So that you have no choice on. And what this resolution to levy the additional .2234 mills combined for all of those millages are what you would further have to roll that, them millages back if you did not hold a public hearing allowing the general public to convince you otherwise that you should levy the maximum allowed, which would be the 4.9239 for general operating, or further roll that back. And that just gives the general public the ability to, or the opportunity to convince you that you do not need to capture that rate of inflation to happen. And any further questions on that?
Yes, Nick, this is Nemo. I have a question for you. First of all, a comment. It's nice to see you. It's refreshing.
Thank you.
Thank you for being there. Thank you for being there to answer the questions. Now, now my question, I know I spent a whole bunch of time doing this research, analyzing as to what this is going to be and what are we levying and what can be maximized with whatever we have. Now, the question to you, I know the county can levy up to 8.0020 mills. And then also that was mentioned that we're additionally levying 0.2234 mills. So is that in addition to what is already being levied? Is that correct?
No, the 8.002 mills, it's a maximum overall you can levy. You would further have to reduce that by .2234 if you did not hold that public hearing, Julie. So the 8.002 would further be reduced by .2234. That's why it has to be, because it's an additional, because otherwise you would have to reduce it, reduce your tax levy to generate the same as you did last year.
Yes, it makes sense. And so with, with that particular question, so are, is the taxes, just for the public, this is for the public record, is the taxes going to go up for our citizens with this additional levy of 0.2234?
Receive the 1.9% rate of inflation increase. If you look at your taxable value, it went up 1.9%. So the average person would see that roughly a 1.9% increase in the county tax levy. But the millage actually will be less because overall as a county, we went up by more than the rate of inflation.
So we're going to pass this resolution to lower the mill. Is that correct?
Well, no, you have no choice. That's lowered already prior to you even holding this meeting or today. That's been reduced. Like I point out, with just the general operating millage that was on the tax bills last year, 4.9527. Anybody that looks at their summer tax bill for 2019, that levy was 4.9527. This year, at the most, you can levy as a board, 4.9239. It could actually be reduced, but because they received a 1.9% increase in the rate of inflation, and because this is not just a 1.9%, they will see a slight increase in taxes to the county.
Okay.
Are you going to have a hearing?
That's, that's what you guys are voting on right now. I mean, that's, that's what you as a board are doing today to tentatively set what Commissioner Kessel read was reset that to approve that. If you approve that resolution, then that will trigger that you have to have the public hearing, which will be the following resolution presented to you to set that hearing. But if this resolution goes down, then it will be a moot point of whether that public hearing happens.
Thanks, Nick.
And you'd have to further reduce the millage down. Just to put again, the general operating millage, you would reduce that to 4.9239 to 4.7864.
Repeat that figure, please?
Okay, if you did not hold the public hearing, well, you have to set the levy up at some point. So if you did not have the public hearing, you would further have to reduce that millage down from 4.9239 to 4.7864.
Thanks, Nick.
And I would like to point out too, for clarification, the back, last, I believe in December, you passed a budget that anticipated the levy of the maximum amount. So I just want to point that out, that the budget that you approved for 2020 is dependent on this millage to be levied at the maximum allowed. So I just want to point that out to you.
Mr. Chairman?
Questions on 20-045?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
If I may, there are two things playing in here. And Nick will probably have a heart attack at my simplification efforts. This whole process is a game that's been played by Lansing. We passed years ago a Headley Amendment in Michigan. Basically, what the Headley Amendment said is that the taxes that are levied by the government, okay, cannot go up more than the rate of inflation. We then later passed a resolution that said, if you want to accept a rate of inflation increase in taxes, then you have to have this public hearing. And Lansing required that all the municipalities in the state report it as an increase in millage, which is, to my way of thinking, a factually impaired statement. It is simply accepting the inflation rate of increase. But we can't go higher than that because of the Headley Amendment. So there are two things. First of all, the public always refers to taxes, and that's incorrect. You have to refer to millage, and then you have to refer to taxes. And the millage is going down. That's because of the amendment. But the inflation rate is going to be discussed at this public hearing, whether we will accept it. And if we accept the inflation rate, then that means this .2234 mills gets, in a sense, added back in. The millage rate will still be lower than it was last year, but it won't be as low as it could be at the rate of inflation. Okay, so the hearing we're going to have is simply saying, we're going to accept the rate of inflation increase. We know we're going to get less millage than we had last year. The millage rate's going to be lower. We know that. But the taxes we collect, which is different from the millage rate, is going to be 1.9% higher. And in order to accomplish that, this .2234 mills gets added on. And that's where they, where Nick has come up with this 8.002 mills. It's a game that Lansing played verbiage, and it's entirely reasonable. And as he said, the budget we passed last December assumed that we would accept the rate of inflation increase. And all of the assessment notices that went out to everybody, to individual property owners, last March, indicated on there and gave them an estimate as to what was going to happen to their taxes based upon the new assessment and the inflation rate that the state allowed. So everybody was aware back in March and had the chance to go in and complain at the Board of Review if they weren't happy with it. Hopefully that helps. And if it doesn't help, I would be glad to sit down with anybody for conversation before the public hearing.
Bruce, I have a comment here for you. I hope you can hear me, Bruce. Now, what you're saying is that we are supposed to accept what Lansing has placed upon us. And the taxable value, like you said, when is to be accepted because Lansing played the game. Now, Lansing is government, and they are playing the game. I don't think we'd be able to be in a position to accept it because of the current situation. Because all this, the taxable value went up, this all went up before the COVID-19. This is a total change now, and I'm worried and concerned for our taxpayers to endure any kind of an increase if we are going to suggest. Because we're in a pandemic situation, the situation does not even give us the feasibility to have a public hearing on a Zoom or WebEx or virtual meeting, because it's simply, a lot of people will not be able to express their thoughts. So if this does create the rate of, the rate of inflation, like you mentioned, for the increase of millage, and if we do happen to add the .02234 mils, it's going to trigger a public hearing, and I would like to have public to comment, to express their thoughts, because again, we're all taxpayer-based elected members. So again, with all that, taxes are levied by the government, like you just said, it's the game played by Lansing. I don't believe that we should be in this pandemic situation, should be in this position to say, yes, let's accept what Lansing has thrown on us. We could make some changes here. So that is my concern, and I thought I'll just mention that to you, but I appreciate your explanation.
Obviously, I did a lousy job of explaining because Lansing is not requiring us to do anything. Lansing set up the verbiage, the words that we're using. They're not requiring us to do it. That's our decision. And what we're doing with this public hearing is to discuss whether or not we want to accept the rate of inflation increase. That's all it's doing. Lansing is requiring nothing. And everybody, as I said, was informed back in March, when they received their assessment notice, what was happening to their own individual situation. So that's where we're at. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions or comments on 45? None. We'll vote on it, please.
Commissioner Karen?
Commissioner who?
Carolyn.
No.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
No.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cap?
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-2.
Please continue, Bruce.
Resolution 20046 to the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Commissioners has passed Resolution 20045 to tentatively levy an additional .2234 mils for the tax year 2020. And whereas Act 5 Public Acts of Michigan 1982 provides that the Board of Commissioners may approve the levy of an additional millage rate within the present legal or authorized millage rate only after providing certain notice to the public and holding a public hearing for the purpose of receiving testimony and discussing the levy of an additional millage rate for the ensuing fiscal year. As Michigan Governor Executive Order 2075 states the following, "To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, protect public health, provide essential protections to vulnerable Michiganders, it is crucial while Michiganders take steps to limit in-person contact. These critical mitigation measures include social distancing, number of people interacting at public hearings. To that end, it is reasonable to presence at meetings and hearings of public bodies and other governmental entities in Michigan. Public bodies and entities must continue to conduct public business during this emergency, including actions to respond to COVID-19 compromising public health, safety, and welfare." Whereas Section 10A of the Executive Order 202075 allows phonic conferencing or video conferencing in which both Now therefore, it resolve that a public hearing shall be held in 1920 A and by a video conference. Tax year revenue for the 2020 and 2021 fiscal years. Two, hereby authorized to publish notice for each hearing, for such hearing, said notice to be in the form meeting the requirement of said Act 5 and include information necessary to conduct the public hearing in accordance with said Executive Order 202075 and the Hillsdale Daily News. The notice shall be published not less than six days before the public hearing. Three, notice of the public hearing shall be published in the county, on the county website in accordance with Article 5.13 of the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners' Rules of Procedure and Bylaws and said Executive Order 2020-75. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell, and I move for the adoption of this resolution.
This is Ruth.
Mr. Chairman, are you asking for any questions? Because you're muted.
Any questions or comments, please?
Mr. Chairman, yes, if I may.
Go ahead.
The Resolution 20-406 mentions about, and that is what was read today by Commissioner Caswell. It talks about that it would be resolved by having a public hearing, but the public hearing would be, I'm assuming, in person, which actually mentions the address and the timeframe, that is June 9th at 10 o'clock in the conference room. So is this going to be changed? Can, can the public? Question reads.
You should have received the one that Bruce sent, or Bruce read. It is a updated one that Nick sent out to everyone after the governor extended the stay home, stay safe. So the one in your packet is not the one that we were, are discussing. It's the one Nick sent out on May 23rd.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, for whatever reason, I do not see it, but again, I should probably look better. But if this agenda went through and if it was posted on our Board of Commissioners' website, then the public also would have probably, unless they have the amended or the updated 20046. Again, the only means of having a public hearing and to have a good fruitful public hearings. And I see that the guidelines do expect us to follow the CDC guidelines, but here we're passing these major life-changing transformation to our taxpayers without them around. I understand that we're giving them the liberty to come via Zoom and WebEx virtually, but there are some farmers and there are some local businesses who have been shut down, who don't have proper internet, will not be able to participate via you know, for this purpose. So we're making these decisions, this decision should have been tabled or should be encouraged to table once we're back opened up with the local.
No.
Commissioner, these proceedings must continue. There has not been anything done at the state level to postpone the actions that we need to take on tax levy. And the governor has issued a statement that we are to continue utilizing online services through the end of June. So we're going to conduct business much as we have been. We have, I believe, let's me get around here. This pointed towards Nick, but I think there's about 15 or 16 on the meeting today. So people are able to log in and everyone has a smartphone. There's even the ability for them to call in via phone number that is listed on the posting. So they can either participate via the WebEx or via the telephone. So we're affording any opportunity for people to speak via comment or during this public hearing. I'm confident that if someone really would like to talk, they have the ability.
With all due respect, Nemo.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that I, I will have to agree with Mark on this. You know, all of us are on sometimes up to six meetings a day for all the different things that we're on. And we're all doing them virtually now. And it's our job as the representative of our constituents in our district to make sure that everybody in our district knows that we're having this public hearing. We have to spread that word. And that's what we all do. And we can't hold things up. We have to keep moving forward and taking care of business. And I agree with Mark that there's no reason why any citizen wouldn't be able to have their voice heard in this public hearing. This is going to be on the radio and in the paper and all of us telling our constituents through the townships that this public hearing is happening. And there's no reason why any citizen will not be able to participate. They could call in on the phone if they don't have a computer or a smartphone. So I see no problem with, you know, this is the governor's order we've taken.
Thank you, Ruth. Anything else? Okay, hearing no other comment. We'll vote on 46.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Passes 5-0. All right, Bruce, please continue.
20047 to the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we authorize Commissioner Caswell to sign the MIDC, Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Contract. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell, I move for the adoption of this amendment, or this resolution.
Support. This is Ruth.
Any comments on Resolution 20-047? I know in my discussion with Kim, the budget is virtually identical to the one that we approved for the previous year. Is that not correct, Bruce?
It's, no, it's not identical because all of the money that we requested from the state to do construction, to build private rooms for the defense attorneys and so on, is not in this budget because all that will be done. So it's less money for the state. Our share has to go up by the rate of inflation according to the legislation that passed in Lansing. So our share is up, you know, 1.9% or whatever. And the state share is down. We won't be doing any construction next year.
Thank you for that clarity.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Would we require an amount in this resolution? Since that was brought up earlier, there's no amount.
The amount is, what requiring is the ability for me to sign the contract. You have the contract, and that one is in there.
The cost analysis is in your packet, and that is always attached, I believe, isn't it? Yeah.
Well, the bid was in the packet too, and you know, it said it was a fixed amount, but we had to change it. So I'm just asking, if it's good for one, it's good for the other, I say.
Well, then we need to, if Julie thinks that, then we need to change. I don't think Julie is the thing. If you think that, then we should, you should amend it now before we vote on it. This is just a resolution to authorize Bruce to sign it. That's all this resolution is. But if you want to include that all of the amounts of the contract are in, are in with it. They're all right there. I'm looking at them right now, and they're in our packet. But if you want to amend it, then you should do it now before we vote.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, the other one was amended to change it, to add the amount. Are we going to be consistent or not? What are we doing?
Unclear.
Well, if I may, I think it's a contract. And if you're going to put a dollar amount, and I think that's what it is, to be transparent. And you know, if it was asked for the other resolution, and I think we should keep consistency that really brings about light because it's a you know, a resolution, but then if no amount is given and no amount is put there, I think and down the line, we might wonder why that was not put in, but some of the other resolutions did have. I would like to encourage to put the amount in this 20-047 and take a vote on it.
Bruce, your thoughts?
I don't care.
If you, if two commissioners want to do that, then that's what we should do. Do you want us to put, I think either Julie or Nemo should make a motion since they're the ones that want to do it. But I'm looking at the budget total and it's $407,313.37. If that, is that, is that what you guys want in there?
I want to be consistent. That's all I'm asking. I want to be consistent in our resolution.
Okay, I'll make the motion to amend Resolution 20047 to include the amount of $407,313.37.
Support.
Okay, is everybody good with that amendment? I mean, is there further discussion on that amendment?
If you want clarity for citizens, then you need to split it into the state amount, and you need to split it to the county amount. 407 is the total.
Okay, what are, I'm looking at it right now, Bruce. What are those amounts? I'm looking at it right now. I'm not very clear.
You know, if you just just start to take it back at the next, bring it all spell out.
The state grant is and the local is 116, 144.65.
The total amount is 407,313.37 cents.
Right, I know.
You want to split it.
Bruce just said it should be split out, and that's what it is, state and local. Is that correct, Bruce?
Then split it.
Am I, am I reading the right figures?
I guess, yes.
Okay.
Want to state grant and state and local share together, which is 291,168.72 cents, and local share as 116,144.65 cents, totaled 407,313.37 cents as amended.
Support the change.
All right. Let me regress for a minute. This has been passed in the past simply the way it's worded. We have not broke out the dollar amount. The resolution and the contract are attached to each other when they go into the file. They become a permanent record as attached items so that if somebody wants to look at that resolution or look at the numbers, it's all in one nice neat little bundle.
That's right.
So.
Well, I agree with you, Mark, but if there's two commissioners that don't agree, then.
Well, here's the other problem, Ruth. This is a submission that needs, that Kim needs to submit on or before June 1st. It's not the final approval. We're basically talking about signing this so Kim can get it submitted. And the state may or may not have approved this the way it's submitted. If you recall, last year, Kim brought us back an amended one that we needed to talk about and sign as well. So, you know, So, you know, my point being is, is we're getting hung up on a dollar number here that, that is going to be attached to the resolution, number one. Number two, this could come back to us in maybe two meetings from now as an amended item as well. So, um, Bruce, have I said anything that's wrong?
I don't believe so, no.
I think Julie, I understand your point that you're making and Namu, I understand what you guys are saying, that we should be consistent across the board. And if we, if we did it for the other one, then we should do it for this one and we should do it for all of them. But I think that this one is different because the other one was a bid with a company and I didn't want us to not have the figure in there. And then the company comes back to us and charges us a lot more and we don't have anything in writing, you know, to back, to back us ourselves up. This is different because this, this may be amended when she takes it to the state and we don't have control over that.
I don't disagree with you, Ruth, except for in the bid, it specifically said in that bid from Daley that it was a fixed amount. It was stated right in the bid, it was a fixed amount of thirty thousand. So I'm just trying, I'm just asking us to be consistent in how we do our resolutions. That's all. I withdraw my amendment.
Ruth, I believe you supported that. Concur with withdrawing that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the amendment is withdrawn. Further discussion. And, uh, twenty dash zero forty-seven. I think for the, I think consistency is always good, but not all situations are the same. So we're getting, always be flexible. Hearing no further discussion, we will vote on twenty dash zero forty-seven.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Castle?
Say again, Bruce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
That is passed, thank you. Continue, Bruce.
Um, Derek requested from the state, you can do this every year, we've never done it in the past, but he requested a thirty-day extension for, uh, getting our audit done. It's what's allowed under state law and nothing has changed in the governor's executive orders. And the, basically the auditor requested this because he's backed up on, they're backed up on all their audits because of this COVID thing. So Derek wrote a letter to the Department of Treasury requesting a thirty-day extension. And Derek, did you get an answer back from him?
Having trouble, can you hear me?
Yep.
I was having trouble pinning down, um, Ken Tausma to, to a date on when he would be able to have a site visit. So I've drafted the letter, I sent it to him. I'm kind of waiting till, till he says a hundred percent, yeah, I'm going to be here this day, because I wanted to include that in the letter. We don't have to submit the letter until next month. I do want to submit it as soon as I can, um, but I wanted to get that piece of information from Ken before I did. The, the, if you read the numbered letter that, um, admits or that allows you to, to request this extension, it talks about stating when you expect to have the audit complete. Not saying we can't have it done before that, but I just thought that was pertinent piece of information to add, to add to our request.
Questions, anybody?
Yes, Commissioner Castle, I do have a question for Derek, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi Derek, how are you today? Thanks for coming.
Yep.
So my question is for this audit for the two thousand and nineteen, um, I, I know you've given, um, you've sent this letter. So in the past, have they come into the facility to do it or are you going to consider having do it, um, at their own facility? Virtually you will have any kind of a dialogue if you are going to proceed.
Well, I've, we've already started the process electronically. I've sent quite a few documents to Anderson-Tackman, um, but there's a portion of the audit that they actually require to be on site for. And that's the case with all of their clients. So as they were adhering to the state home orders, uh, they got backed up a little bit on, on making those site visits. I'm hoping that we get enough done electronically that a site visit would be super minimal. But yeah, that's kind of where we are. I, we made a lot of progress last week in what we had sent them. And I, I'm still in the process of sending them just as much information as I can or as I'm capable of electronically, so.
Thank you, Derek.
Any other questions on that subject? Okay, please continue, Bruce.
Okay, the other, the other thing here is hazard pay update and, uh, basically Mark has felt that there should be hazard pay. Well, Mark, why don't you go ahead and explain what's going on with it and then I'll come back and fill in the number.
Okay, thank you. So Derek, feel free to chime in anytime, but Derek's been putting together some numbers. We were looking at, I was approached by the union, uh, or by the unions, let's put it that way, um, for some sort of pay. Derek was looking at two dollars per hour. Senate Bill six ninety, actually, um, I, I believe, I recall correctly, puts a thousand dollars towards, uh, critical, um. And so Derek, do you have an update on six ninety? Or I believe there's a House bill that goes along with that now as well.
Well, it hasn't, it has not passed the House yet. I, I can just kind of tell you what it is a little bit. It's, it's, there's a lot to it, but the, the hazard paid portion has eligible payments to law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, and nine-one-one operators. And it's a reimbursable, uh, funding for any bonuses we paid to those specific, uh, types of employees, up to a thousand dollars per employee. So that's, as of right now, that thousand dollars would be actually more than the two dollars an hour that we've put together for most of those employees. But that's what the bill is and I, I have no idea when or if it will pass. I, I get notifications anytime there's any updates. And there really hasn't been much up, much movement on it that I've seen in the last week. Commissioner Castle might have more information on it, I'm not sure, but that, that's all I really know about it.
This is Ruth. I want to make sure I got, I got law enforcement officers, nine-one-one operators, firefighters, air medics. Was there any that I missed?
EMTs, emergency medical technicians.
Okay.
And I believe that, I believe you have them all.
Thank you. Bruce, do you know how that's going, how that bill is going or is that a question for Eric Lighthizer?
No, it's, it's, the Senate passed it, it was the first stab at it. I'm sure typically there's negotiations going on about what they're going to do with it and so on. The only thing I'd point out on all this is that as a county, we can only apply for, and we have to apply for it, we can only apply for, uh, county employees, which would be nine-one-one and then sheriff corrections officers. We can't apply for EMTs and we can't apply for people that are non-county employees. They're going to have to apply on their own, those, those organizations. So I just want to be clear on that with everybody. And who knows where, where it'll end up and what'll happen. This is part, the part of the three point billion that the feds gave the state for COVID relief. And that's what this would be under, that section. Now, in the final negotiation, the House agreed, the governor agreed, hard to say, but that's where we're at right now.
So last week, um, medical care meeting, there's some discussion in the House to include, uh, medical care facility workers. And I know, um, even though they're part of county government, you know, they operate somewhat independently, um, they are looking at this and keeping close tabs on it as well because depending on how the version comes out of the House, um, it may include, uh, you know, those first line people working at the medical care facility.
Right, right.
So I guess at this point in time, there's really no action for us to take because we're continuing to monitor it. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that, um, it is something that I would like us to consider, but I would also like us to know more about the, uh, you know, six ninety, Senate Bill six ninety as it stands now, before we vote on anything as far as, uh, hazard pay or COVID pay, however you want to language, you know, however we decide to link, uh, put a tag on it. But Derek, I believe you had a number, you sent that out, to include fringes and everything for the people that we felt would be eligible at this time?
Um, yeah, so, uh, the general fund expense as of the last pay period would be, uh, forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. That's if you were to provide two dollars an hour worked, um, for hourly employees in the general fund. The total county, so if you were to include nine-one-one, uh, inspection department, drug court, drains and, uh, childcare fund, uh, would be just under fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's the two dollars an hour plus FICA Medicare retirement fringes.
Thank you.
And if we, if we don't get the thousand bucks from the state through what the feds gave them, if we don't get that money, uh, the fifty-seven thousand have to come out of the fund balance.
That is correct. And Derek and I talked the other day, there's more than likely will be another, another pay period here. So that number will, you know, go unproportionately. But that's the number he has for us today to, to consider, but, uh, um, a lot of folks are getting this type of pay, um, different businesses are paying it. So it, it's something that I think we need to seriously consider and I would, uh, if we have something as far as more knowledge on, uh, Senate Bill six ninety for the next week, next meeting, um, I will get with Bruce and I would expect that we'll bring forth a resolution of some kind, um, concerning that at the next meeting. So.
Mark?
Yes.
Uh, something else to consider, just, just so for the totality, um, in that, in that, uh, fifty-seven thousand dollar figure that I gave, about twenty thousand of that is the sheriff's department. So if, if you consider that if this plan, this bill goes according to plan and we are able to, to recoup that reimbursement, um, that would lower our costs to do this for all of our employees by about twenty grand as of right now.
Okay, good point. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that subject? All right, Bruce, what else do you have for us today?
Well, the emergency food and shelter program is a pot of money that the feds give to the county every year, uh, through the community foundation. And it dropped again this year to two thousand, six hundred roughly. And that money was just, uh, ten thousand of it went to Harmony for emergency shelter and seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight of it went to the Community Action Agency. They work a lot with people that need shelter. Then there was another pot that came along when the CARES Act was passed, twenty-five thousand, one seventy-six. And of that money, uh, three thousand of it was allocated to Domestic Harmony for food, another two thousand to Domestic Harmony for shelter, uh, fifteen thousand was allocated to King Cupboards Food Pantry, uh, two thousand was allocated to the Waldron Food Pantry and three thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars was allocated to the St. Anthony Family Center. Now, there's a lot of requirements and reporting and typical government garbage that goes along with this. So if the Waldron Food Pantry, they're kind of a, they're kind of a total volunteer thing down there. If they're not able to meet all those requirements, then there was, uh, it was put in a resolution that the two thousand that they're getting would go to St. Anthony's. So I'm just letting you know how that money was distributed. Community Action Agency or the AAA Agency, as you know. And for the first time, I understand in a long time, I haven't been there a long time, uh, they actually made a little money. Anybody there? Hello?
I am unable to understand anything that Commissioner Castle is saying.
Uh, so am I. I just had a big criti- the windmill and nobody could hear. This is very, would you repeat that again, Bruce?
You're cutting in and out a lot, Bruce. I'm sure it's not your fault.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
You can hear me now?
Hear you now.
Yes.
Sent you out the draft proposal for, for the windmill project with anticipated revenues and anticipated expenditures and showed you what the proposal is from the finance committee on how to allocate those monies and asked for comments back. I would urge you, if you have comments, thoughts, to get them back, either Ruth or I, uh, moving ahead. Those numbers will change. They, you know, once we get the bids in on the heating system, we'll have an idea of what that's going to cost. We know in the pension that we're going to have to put in a hundred and thirty-five thousand a year on average over the next twenty years, uh, to get it fully funded, which is a requirement under state law. And the remaining money out of that whole project, uh, as we're saying, as, as we proposed, is going into capital, a capital improvements fund so that there will be money every year allocated. so that there will be money every year allocated to doing projects that the various and sundry commissioners and, or not commissioners, but department heads and elected officials would like to see done. And then we'll have to choose each year in the budget process which of those we can afford to do and which ones we're going to do. So that's about it.
Yeah, Bruce, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Thank you for that explanation. In the meantime, I wanted to also tell you I missed out a whole bunch important statements you made about the windmill project and how we're going to possibly disperse these amounts. And I know they're all anticipated and they will create a revenue. But again, they're anticipated and we're already lining up with projects at hand. I, I know we have Moscow, Adams and Wheatland Townships, and we have major concerns as it relates with Wheatland Township. They've been fighting this windmill projects. And, you know, I'm a little bit worried you made that statement anticipated. Why are we already creating our project plan in action when we have not received the money at hand? Again, this is a critical issue. And I think we, if you're asking for a future resolution of how to put it in front of the future Board of Commissioners to deal with the dispersed amount, I think we need to wait for the allocated monies before we decide to make any plans. And I don't personally feel we should be, it's okay to discuss, but then all these are anticipated amounts.
I thought that's what I said. This was a discussion. I didn't say anything about a resolution.
I think I mentioned, you mentioned that you and Ruth were going to talk about, but you know, it's also concerning one of my townships, Wheatland Townships. And I hope you would bring everybody into possibly see what we're going to do because we have two important here that I share, one Julie shares. And I think we, we're going to make these decisions. We need to again, you know, have those in front of us. Monies are not there at the moment. And we're, we have concerns from the Wheatland Townships because they are having a very hard time with this windmill project and it's hurting their township. But here we're already making plans with what we're going to do with the revenue. Just, just saying.
Okay, this is Ruth. Very respectfully speaking, Nemo, I appreciate your comments and I understand what you're saying. I think that Bruce has done a very good job with this in light of where our county has been in the past and looking forward and being visionary. The problems that we've had in the county in the past. I think that Bruce is trying to have us not do that anymore and going forward, have a plan going forward. And he's, he's sniffing that out and following that. And I think that's very good. Now, the only, only thing that I, only couple of things that I have a little discussion about is we have to be careful because I don't think that we can bind future Boards of Commissioners on anything. I don't, I don't care what it is. We've, we've talked about this before. And if we, if we write a resolution, I don't think we can word it as such that we bind future Boards of Commissioners because I don't think you can do that. We can make suggestions and, you know, all that, but we can't try to bind them. The other, the other suggestion I would make, I read this, Bruce, and it's very good. But I think it should also be spelled out in the way of a financial statement. And you, you, you are, Derek, write up a financial statement year by year by year. So in 2019, 2020, 2021, and so on, what are the figures going to look like? Because right now you've just got, for the first five years, we're going to do this. And for the next 15 years, we're going to do that. And I think it would be nice to have a financial statement at some point, year by year by year. That's just a suggestion on my part. But I, I think this is very good that Bruce's and Nick and Derek have worked on this for us. I think it's a good step forward. Thank you.
So good discussion, but bear in mind, just like Ruth has indicated, if we don't create a roadmap for these potential dollars, you know, it, it could be probably a bad thing on our part if we don't at least create the roadmap for, for the use of those dollars. So I think that's what, if you look at the email that Bruce sent out, and it is a discussion at this time, but it's basically a roadmap to assist not only us, but future commissioners, commissioners. So. Anything else, Bruce?
Nope.
Okay. Ruth, that brings us up to you.
Okay, um, the main thing that I want to bring out is that there is a telephone line. And if anybody's listening, you might want to take this phone number down. I'm going to give you a phone number here in just a minute. So get ready to write this down. But this, this comes from DHHS. And what they've done is they've set up a peer operated COVID-19 warm line. And what this is, is a statewide warm line for Michiganders living with persistent mental health conditions. This was set up for COVID-19. The warm line will connect individuals with certified peer support specialists who have lived experiences of behavioral health issues, trauma, personal crises, and are trained to support and empower the callers. So if you have constituents who are having persistent mental health challenges, including anxiety, depression and trauma, then the number is 888-733-7753. And that is, and I'll repeat that number here in a minute. But that warm line operating seven days a week from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And it's a DHHS warm line for anybody that is having problems with the COVID-19, anxiety, depression and so forth, as I said. And it's statewide. Okay, now, the. Yes, sir.
Just a minute, please. Jody's got a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you saying warm, like W-A-R-M?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lifeways had a front page article on the Hillsdale Daily News on Saturday, May 23rd. Employees Advocate for Consumers During COVID-19. And that was written by Nancy Hastings. And it was all about Lifeways. And it cited several people in that article. I thought it was a very good article. That's the second good PR that Lifeways has had in the Hillsdale paper in the last couple of weeks. Very good. As far as the Human Services Network is concerned, we have been meeting right along every month by Zoom. What their meetings are basically consisting of now, since things have, have changed a little bit, is that basically John Robertson, who works at Hillsdale Hospital, has been giving us extensive graphs, statistics, United States, the world and Hillsdale County of COVID-19. You know, how many deaths and how many cases and all that sort of a thing. Very extensive. Also Rebecca Burns from the Health Department comes on and gives us local statistics of the tri-county area and talks to us. They also are still talking about the census. As of May 18th, Hillsdale County was at 62%. We still need to push that. It's difficult. You know, people are not really, and their mind is not on the census. But we talk about that. Then each agency that's in the Human Services Network, each representative gets to take a turn and talk about what their agency is doing. Most of them, all of them, our staff are working remotely. They're looking at partial reopenings beginning on June 1st. Staff first, and then the public later. So slow reopenings. Also, as far as the unemployment is concerned, Janet Myers at Michigan Works Southeast, she's the service manager for the Hillsdale. Three staff members from the Hillsdale office have now been trained and have access to the state database for unemployment. So more in-depth assistance can be given to claimants. They, they were kind of hung up there for a month or two where they hadn't had training and couldn't really help people. But now they have three staff members that have been trained to access the state database from Hillsdale. So if you're having a severe problem, this isn't just for, you know, I called and I can't get through because we all know that. But if you're really hung up for a month or more and you really have got a block on your unemployment, I have one person like that. You can call Michigan Works Southeast in Hillsdale. You can't go there because they're closed, but they're working. And there's three staff members that have access to their database and may be able to help. That's, that's worth a try if you have somebody was still having an issue. And other than that, been doing a lot of Lifeways work this month and been doing suicide prevention. We had a meeting by Zoom for Suicide Prevention Coalition of Hillsdale County. And we, and we're doing depression support once a week virtually right now. So unless there's questions, that's my report.
Thanks for Ruth. Okay, thank you, Ruth. Let's see, Julie and I already took care of the discussion on the updated Department Head Meeting. One of the things that I know, I think I mentioned, we were working towards putting up shielding over the counters. That practice is getting underway. And I talked to Taylor, and that project is currently at about 19,000 dollars to exceed 20. G and G Glass is working on that. And I believe the construction company was Hawkins Construction because they're creating wood frames for the glass. These will be installed permanently. So they will be there going forward to protect our staff and the community from whether it be COVID or the common cold or influenza or whatever. So they've stained the wood frames to try and match the surrounding woodwork in each particular office. So right now, let's see. Marty sent this to me on 5/22. Indicated installations will start next week before the 28th. They plan to stay with the project until complete, which should be completed by the end of the following week. So I would anticipate that by the end of next week, we've got them all in. And that was one of the things that I was adamant about, that we have those all installed prior to opening the buildings, which we are still locked down at least till the 12th. So we will be ahead of schedule with the current orders as they stand. Have Health Department, excuse me, Health Department meeting on Thursday. And I have asked Becky to, as an additional item for all of us to discuss these preparedness plans that we were discussing, or COVID Preparedness Response Plan, to discuss that a little bit at the Board of Health meeting to get perspective from the other two counties as well as from the Health Department because they're working on one as well. The next meeting is June 9th and we will be online again. And I have a letter here that came in from a resident. I believe it's Jody, looks like Jody Boyd, 3751 Bankers Road. And I'll just read it to you. It's addressed to Julie and myself as chairperson and vice chair. Dear County Commissioners, at these times of rapid change, I realize, I realize my appreciation for your continued service. Thank you for following your oath of office to defend our Constitution from all that oppose it. I wish you success and peace of mind in this endeavor. Please call me if I can be of any assistance. Sincerely, Jody Boyd. She closes with a quote from Thomas Jefferson, "That government is best which governs the least because its people discipline themselves." So I'll leave that in the Commissioner's office if anyone wants to view it. And with that, I don't have anything else at this time unless there's a question. I do have one other thing. Find it. Just sent me an update, so I'll share that with you. He says, as of this morning, we are treating two residents in isolation and have two residents, or have, excuse me. Let me start again. We are treating two residents on the isolation wing and have zero residents tests pending. We are moving back to the original eight-bed isolation unit and opening the east wing once the deep cleaning is complete. All residents are being followed for any signs or symptoms of the virus and there are no plans for these measures to cease. All staff are back to work and we currently have zero staff tests pending. We continue to screen all staff daily prior to reporting for duty and have no plans for this safety measure to stop. So that's the update from medical care. I shared that with you and that's all I have. So any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move to public comment. Anyone wish to address us at this time?
Hi, Mark, it's Stephanie.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to point out how well the delinquent tax revolving note sale went. We got a really good rate at 1% and it was from Century Bank and Trust. So I think that's pretty good and just wanted to make it as a public record. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And as long as we've got you on, we did or the resolution for the public hearing at the next meeting.
I've been working on it.
Say that again.
I sent it to Nick and for his review.
Very good, very good. I, I appreciate your promptness. Okay, is there any? Okay, is there any questions or comments for Stephanie since she's on? None. Any other public wish to comment?
I do want to comment on the hearing notice. The six days prior is June 1st, which is a Monday. And they do not publish last I knew on Monday. So I think I'm going to have to get it here at the end of the week, May 29th, if that's okay with you.
Yes, that'll be fine. It's just, I think it's a minimum of six days, so we'd be all right doing it on the 29th, Stephanie.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I guess that brings us up. Additional, there we go. Thank you, Jody. Additional business. Julie?
I'd just like to say that since a lot of the veterans' memorial ceremonies had to be canceled yesterday due to the stay-at-home order, that we would like to recognize all veterans in our county and also mostly those for Memorial Day who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Nemo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday I had a very blessed day in Waldron Cemetery. We had a veteran service there. And a lot of people came in, like I mentioned earlier. And I would just like to also thank all of our men and women who serve and all those who have, we have lost. And we just want to thank you for the service that you provide every day to just protect our country. And I think every day should be a day that we can pay respects to our nation's fallen soldiers. And I feel very broken-hearted that we did not have a parade yesterday in Pittsburgh. I was anticipating, but we did have a Waldron service there at the cemetery. And we continue to pray for all of their continued provide. And another, on another note, the county's planning commission on May 26th at 1:00 p.m. and public is invited. If you need further information, how to be registered, you can contact Kim Jackson, who's the secretary, or you can contact me. My phone number is 517-306-7021 to be registered, to be a part of the planning commission because we are going to meet virtually at 1:00 p.m. on May 26th. So, thank you.
Thank you. Bruce, anything additional? Hey, Bruce, you still with us? You're muted. There you go. Anything additional?
Yeah, I just want to thank you. I just want to thank you, Doug Sanford, for all the hard work you've put in over the last couple of months. You guys have done a real yeoman's job at staying up on all this COVID stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. And I know Doug appreciates the comment as well. It's, it's been interesting at best. Ruth, any additional comments?
And also I would just like to say I, I enjoy working with Bruce on the Finance Committee and with Derek. I think what Bruce has done is, is refreshing. I've been on the Commissioners for seven years and we've make, we've made great strides in Hillsdale County on the board there as far as our finances are concerned. And from where we were back in 13, 14, 15, and you know, when I first got on the board to where we are now, Bruce is really helping the process, and so is Derek, trying to be visionary and moving us forward. And I really appreciate that a lot because I think that's what we as elected officials and we as Commissioners are supposed to be doing is, is making improvements and being visionary leaders. So thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anybody wants some interesting reading, you can go to the Michigan.gov webpage and look for the executive orders. And there are a couple of different links that will allow you to look at all 103 of them, most of which have either been, well, I shouldn't say most, about 50% of them have been either rescinded and superseded by a new one, or some of them have expired. But there was five that came out late on Friday. And actually Doug and I were on the phone talking about them at 8 o'clock Friday evening. And then throughout the weekend, him and I were both sorting through them because these are crafted by either an attorney that is practicing to be an illusionist or I'm not sure who crafts the language on them. But it is very hard sometimes to figure out what is being said in those. So like I say, if you want some interesting reading and you're really, really bored, feel free to click on that link. So, but it is, it is a challenge to keep track of what is rescinded, what is moved forward. And quite frankly, the current stay-at-home order was kind of snuck into a paragraph. And Doug and I even had trouble after reviewing them several times to figure out where it was and how it got extended. But it was actually in EO 100, but at reference to EO 96. And it, then it was, then it was combined with about three other EOs that were being extended at the same time. So, you know, I'm not sure why the intent, or if the intent is to make those confusing, but they could definitely be clearer. So. But with that said, stay home, stay safe, I guess is still in play. And enjoy the sunshine. We are adjourned until tonight. When we'll meet again, virtually of course. Thank you. And, and what I just said, Jody?